Good evening, everyone. The December 2022 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now be called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, everyone, while I read the list of deceased residents for the month of November 2022. George Stettweiler, Judith McLean, Caroline McMaster, Kurt Miller, Linda Tasker, Eleanor Monroe, Nancy Gannon, William Hinkleman, and Judith Loinz. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Wilbert, would you give us a roll call, please? Mayor is absent. Mr. Gilroy is absent with COVID, and Mr. Vasquez is absent. He's traveling.
Okay. Mr. Heller.
Present.
We're done. No, no. Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Here.
Mayor Leslie's absent. Mr. Vasquez is absent. Ms. Swicki.
Present.
Mr. Papas.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy is absent. Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilbert's here. Mrs. Boyle.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Weiss.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Ms. Ford. And happy holidays.
Good evening. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Coburn's been busy again, right? We enjoyed a really fabulous Veterans Day. Coburn Elementary, this Veterans Day proudly honored our local veterans by hosting a wonderful assembly featuring music, speeches, special recognition, and breakfast with those who served. Coburn Elementary students were permitted to invite veteran family members. We honored over 40 veterans from all branches of the Armed Forces, and it was certainly an amazing morning for veterans, students, and staff. The Philadelphia Union recently visited Coburn Elementary for an exciting morning of soccer and fun. This fall, the Union were Eastern Conference Championship winners and in the Major League Soccer Finals, but still found time to visit our school. The third grade student experience with professional Union player Brandon Craig, the Union coaches, and Union mascot Feng is one they certainly won't forget. We held a canned food drive. Coburn Elementary hosted the canned food drive. We collected hundreds of nonperishables. The items were donated by Coburn families and benefited our local city team outreach program. Recently, Coburn Elementary participated in the first annual Delaware County Intermediate Unit Adapted Art Show. Eighty total pieces were selected by the county. Coburn proudly submitted 20 beautiful pieces of adapted art to be displayed in the show. We celebrated American Education Week, which is a time to celebrate and honor all who make a choice to educate, to dedicate themselves to education and the important work that happens daily in our schools. We had a great book fair. Our PTL hosted another amazing book fair. Everyone enjoyed browsing and shopping their favorite books. And finally, Coburn is hosting a toy drive, December 1st to the 16th. Students or community members may bring unwrapped new toys to the office. We have a bin right outside of the main entrance or at the car line entrance. And the toys may benefit AI Dupont Hospital for Children. And again, follow us on Twitter if you want to see what's happening daily. There's always a lot of things happening at Coburn, so follow us on Twitter and check us out. And thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Happy holidays.
Well, Mrs. Ford, I just wanted to say thank you for the Coburn and the Parkside Choir. Please thank the directors. Last night, they did a fabulous job. They did definitely, you know, a pendel of pride very much.
That's awesome. They are, their voices are just incredible.
They were great.
Aren't they?
They were awesome.
I know they sang recently, too, at the Veterans Ceremony here, and then they sang at our assembly. And it was, they sang the Star Spangled Banner, and honestly, they were so on point with their, it was amazing to listen to. So, thank you. I appreciate that, and I will pass that along to their teacher and the students. Yes, okay, and which I know that you know.
Yep.
And the students, but thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Good night. Everybody see first, public discussion session. If there's anyone who'd like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. First public discussion session is closed. Chief Weiss. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everybody. All right. For the month of November, the Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or were assigned a total of 839 CAT assignments through Delcom, and some of the noteworthy incidents were, we had one robbery, seven thefts, one arson, one simple assault, two vandalism criminal mischiefs, five DUIs, two disorderly conducts, eight narcotics investigations, 11 animal complaints, two noise complaints, 36 suspicious conditions, three harassment complaints, 15 domestic sort, domestic disputes, two juvenile complaints, two civil complaints, 61 medical assists, four mental health responses, 57 assist other departments, 33 alarms, 18 vehicle crashes, and 24 hazardous conditions or assist motorist calls. For the month, we had a total of 35 adult arrests, seven juveniles were arrested. We issued 148 citations, 22 parking violations, and 146 warnings were issued. Just some administrative things. Our accreditation process remains on schedule, and we now know that our full assessment will take place during the first quarter of 2023. So fingers crossed, I've got a lot of work to get done, but through the first quarter, we should be, we should be all wrapped up with accreditation so we're going to that. I just also want to, again, congratulate Officers Johnston, Duff, on being sworn in as full-time police officers with our department. I also want to thank Mayor Leslie, President Heller, and all of council, our Civil Service Commission, for their support and assistance in furthering our goals for our police department. As I explain each month, we honor one of our officers for their work. This month, the Officer of the Month is Officer Zebly. Officer Zebly has added responsibilities in addition to his patrol function. He solely handles our youth aid panel process, which is a little bit tedious and lengthy, which has also been very active as of late, so I appreciate all of his work. He also helps with other tasks to assist our department moving along smoothly, so I congratulate him on the job well done. As far as training for the month, Officer Wetton attended his monthly SWAT training. Officers Wetton, Eastman, Duff, and Palmer attended their annual handcuffing, baton, OC, and policy review training. Officer Duff also attended training for PA Traffic Law, field training officer, and an FBI inter-county detective school. Detective Havik conducted armed intruder training with our school district, and I received an email from Dr. Kamenka just thanking Detective Havik and indicated that he received a lot of positive feedback. So, it's good that we're out there interacting with our school districts and making sure that we're all on the same page should we ever have the need. This month, we also received a grant from the Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority, and I just want to thank Mr. Paul Johnson for attending the workshop and presenting us with that check. We're also wrapping up our month-long of No Shave November fundraising event for Hope for Haley. As I miss by, finally, I can shave. Maybe look a little bit younger. I don't think so, but we'll go with it. So, I want to thank everyone that's supported us in our efforts to raise money for such a worthy and necessary cause. This month, Officers Barth, Eastman, and I attended the Delaware County Veterans Memorial Association Dinner. We were very happy to support Mayor Leslie, as he received the Freedom Medal Award. Very deserving. We also assisted this month in an escort for a retiring Delaware County dispatcher who lives in our community and retired after 32 years of service. So, we congratulate him and wish him well in his retirement. And just lastly, I'd just like to thank everyone for all their support throughout the year and wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
Just two things. I just wanted to make sure that you thank Officer Eastman and Kelso and the surrounding departments that assisted with that death arrest on Sunday morning. And also, you know, congratulate Eastman and Kelso on their one-year anniversary tomorrow for their full-time position, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Montella.
Evening, Chief.
Evening.
Didn't I see you earlier today?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. Council, Mr. President, and the residents. Brookhaven Fire Company's monthly fire report for November 2022. We had four fire incidents in the borough, 21 non-fire, 21 calls for mutual aid, five training sessions for an average of 50, we had 51 calls, 606 fire and rescue calls so far this year. Did have a $3,000 loss on vehicle fires. We had $23,000 loss so far, $23,500 of loss so far this year, and $1,650,000 of property endangered. No firefighter injuries for the month. We had two for the year. Our manpower, 51 calls, 14 average firefighters. We were in service for 494 personnel hours, 5,741 hours for the year, five training sessions, averaged 25 firefighters, 213 hours of training for the month, 2,510 hours of training for the year. Brookhaven Fire Company responded to the following incidents in the borough of Brookhaven. We had a fire at 5200 Hilltop Drive, Unit I-14. It was a fire in the electrical outlet in the wall. It was contained quickly. We had a fire, building fire at the Chick-fil-A in the women's bathroom. The Fire Marshal can elaborate on that. It was a small fire. It was contained to the bathroom. We had accident at 352 Brookhaven Road with injuries, and we had a pedestrian struck at 352 and Whitley Road. Assisted Chester Township Fire Department on a building fire at 1235 Rainer Road. Assisted Chester Fire Department on second alarm building fire at 1205 Island Avenue. We also assisted Middletown Fire Company on a building at 201 Martins Lane, and we assisted Folsom Fire Company on a building fire at 1616 McDade Boulevard. Our monthly training was, we did a training class with a rescue fastboard for rescuing civilians and firefighters. We had an incident committee class. We had ground ladder class, and we had an apartment pre-connect leader line class. Brookhaven Fire Company took delivery of our new ambulance 52A. It was certified by the State of Pennsylvania today, and it's in service and running calls tonight. So, that was a big accomplishment for everybody involved in that. The fire company received an industrial firefighting training. We sent a member to the Texas A&amp;M Fire School at Katik's Fire Training Facility. We got invited by Energy Transfer Partners for that training, and the member that attended the certification training received certification in industrial firefighting. Fire Company's Fire Prevention Week totals for the schools and daycares, we finally got this together. At Coburn School, we saw 380 students. Christian Academy, 302 students. The Early Learning Center, daycare, 60 students. The Kinder Care, daycare, 60 students. And the Education Station, play care, we had 10 children. So, all in all, total, we had 812 students and children who have visited during fire Our EMS report for November 2022. The total ambulance calls for the month were 222 calls, 137 patients were transported to the hospital, 126 were transported ALS, 96 were transported BLS, 82 local alarms, 40 mutual aid, and the ambulance has ran 2,433 calls so far this year. Been busy, too. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays and a happy New Year to council and residents. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays to you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor is absent with COVID, so I'll read your report. There will be a veterans' meeting on December 14th at 2:00 PM in the community room at Borough Hall. From the pictures that I saw, looks like the senior luncheon and Christmas tree lighting were a huge success. Mayor would like to thank the rec board and all the volunteers for a fantastic year, and she's looking forward to 2023. Mayor would also like to thank all of our employees for their hard work throughout the year. We could not run the borough without you. And last, the mayor would like to wish the following individuals a happy birthday for the month of December. Fire Marshal Leslie, Councilwoman Sherri, say what?
It's his sister.
Councilwoman Sherri Heller, Councilman Hector Vasquez, Council President Terry Heller. We'll forget it's my birthday.
50.
Yes, it is. And Councilman Mike Gilroy. And the mayor last would like to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season.
He's over the door now.
Over, over and through it.
You're going to be on the unemployment line with me. Keep it up. Mr. Wills, with your last report of the year.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Again, a copy of this listener's report is on file with the Borough Secretary in the event any members of the public would like to review that document. I just have one action item for this evening, and that concerns the borough's Civil Service Commission. As council is aware, back on November the 16th, the Civil Service Commission met and adopted new rules and regulations. And again, those rules and regulations basically affect two issues. Number one is the eligibility pool for full-time applicants to the police department has been expanded, and also, those new rules and regulations are now in compliance with recent revisions to the Pennsylvania Borough Code as it affects civil service requirements. Pursuant to the Pennsylvania Borough Code, all enactments made by the Civil Service Commission to take effect must be ratified by Borough Council at a public vote, and therefore, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to ratify and adopt the new civil service rules and regulations as enacted by our local Civil Service Commission.
Who wants to motion?
I'm moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Just a few extra items. I will bring to both councils attention and members of the public. Last month, I received correspondence from the CEO of Crozier Health, Mr. Anthony Esposito, who had advised me in writing, again, that Crozier Health will continue to furnish the ALS response vehicle, sometimes known as the chase car, to the borough for paramedic services in the usual way and fashion and cost that we have done in the past. And therefore, the correspondence that we had received earlier this year is null and void, so that is certainly good news. Another item on my agenda concerns the current borough tarry towing and abandonment of vehicle ordinance. As council is aware, this was an ordinance that was adopted back in 1965, some 57 years ago. And like fine wine, it has aged, but unfortunately, it has reached its useful shelf life. And therefore, to bring the borough in compliance with various segments of the Pennsylvania Borough Code as well as other statutory regulations, I know the ordinance committee in concert with the Chief of Police and also through my office have proposed and drafted a new towing ordinance. And again, that is an ordinance that will be before Councilwoman Fuchs's report this evening. I believe there will be a motion to advertise that ordinance, and I would certainly recommend that Borough Council, in fact, take that particular action. Next item on my agenda concerns the B&amp;L Disposal Services contract. As we know, last month, the borough agreed to accept the written proposal of B&amp;L Disposal Services to continue to provide trash and recycling services to the borough from years 2023, 2024, and 2025. I have drafted up a formal written contract that has been forwarded to the Borough Secretary for signature by the appropriate borough officials, as well as the President and Secretary of B&amp;L Disposal Services. And again, we will continue with our services with that particular vendor. I think we have been fairly pleased with the level of service and the professionalism that they have certainly been providing to the borough over these past years. Next item on my agenda, I had drafted up a new proposed lease addendum with State Representative Leanne Kruger. As the public may be aware, we sublet certain lease space to Representative Kruger to maintain a part-time office here in the Borough Municipal Building. It has been a win-win for both the representative and certainly for the borough and our borough residents in that we can access those state services and obviously speak with a warm body. There generally is one of her administrative staff members who is present on site to answer and provide those critical state services to our residents, especially our senior citizens. And therefore, the state representative was recently successful in her reelection bid last month. And of course, she has been reelected to a new two-year term, and so I prepared a lease agreement that would, in fact, run with that two-year period. And that has been circulated to the council president. I'm assuming State Representative Kruger will be placing her Jan John Hancock on that particular document in the very near future. And with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress, and again, I wish both members of council and the public, again, a safe, happy holiday season, and again, a productive and prosperous New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report is on file as well. First on the agenda, I see that we've motioned to approve the application resolution for the PA Small Water and Sewer Grant. I talked about this at our last meeting. The state has a grant application out for sanitary and sewer, sewer projects from $30,000 to $500,000, requires a 15% match. An application is due December 21st. Council would need to authorize a project to submit and authorize the council president and borough secretary to execute any documents necessary for that application. I suggested three projects for consideration. The first one was the MS4 projects. If you recall, the MS4 projects are projects that affect stormwater quality. We have a permit from the state and federal government, which says the borough has to do certain construction project within a five-year period in order to meet the new standards. Those projects are equal about a half million dollars, so up to that $500,000, $500,000 grant max. We also had been under a, kind of under the microscope of DEP on the sanitary sewer system. It's tributary to the wastewater treatment plant. There were some high flows that they had targeted. We had done some work on a study, and there's $350,000 estimate for some rehab work that needs to be done in that area. And then the final one was, we had some storm sewer projects, kind of miscellaneous storm sewer projects that were out there, particularly Kenny Drive, Chandler, and Listor Sweeney. And then we talked about the Cambridge basins behind this building, and that's about $200,000 worth of work. So, council's pleasure, we need to authorize which project to make application and then pass the resolution to authorize the Borough Council President and Secretary to execute any documents.
Who wants to motion?
I have a question. The MS4, what is the length of time?
Five years.
To get that complete, you know, for to complete the grant? If we get the grant for that, is it two or three years? I know it's five years, but I mean, for us to complete, dealing with that grant?
The grant. When's the approval date?
Grant expiration, how long we have to spend the money from the grant is three years.
Okay. So, all right. I would rather, I mean, I would rather have that because that's the primary.
I agree.
Okay. So, I would be willing to make the motion so that we can apply. Do you know how much exactly we're going to have to ask for? Is it 350?
We had estimated $465,000 for all the projects. I would suggest we ask for $500,000 in the grant.
And it's 15% match?
15% match, yes.
Okay, that's, that's not bad. Okay, I'm going to make the motion that.
Who wants to second? And are there any further questions?
I'll second, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? No questions and no further questions? I should say, motion carries.
Secondly, on the agenda is motion to approve the street and sewer maintenance contracts. We had open bids for the street and sewer maintenance contracts on November 22nd. Received bids, I should say, they're an online bidding platform. Received three bids for the storm and sanitary sewer maintenance ranging from $67,997.50 to $164,966.25. Going to recommend they award the contract to ADU Services Incorporated at their bid unit prices.
Is that for two years?
That's a one-year contract.
That's one year, okay.
With optional one-year renewals for another two years.
Okay, so that, we could get into actually three years that we had?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's a better idea.
You taking a motion?
I will.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The street maintenance contract, we only received one bid, and that was from Moore Construction Services Incorporated. Their bid was $102,893. I'm going to recommend that award.
I'll make that motion.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
Any questions or opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
I do have a question about the MS4. We still haven't gotten anything back from them as to what, what we had.
The specific list of projects?
Yeah, the specific list.
I don't believe so, Mr. Catania. You forgot to tell me.
Well, that comes with your permit. So, if, basically, we had to prepare what we call Production Reduction Plan, which I, if you recall, we had one of our representatives make a presentation. That was submitted to the state. When you receive the permit, they're basically approving that PRP.
Gotcha.
As part of the permit. So, we did appreciate that approval.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Catania. We have an executive session immediately following tonight's meeting. The topic is a police matter, and I need a motion to approve the November 7, 2022 council meeting minutes.
Make the motion.
Who wants to second?
I'll take the second.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on the minutes? Need a motion to approve the November 28, 2022 council workshop meeting minutes.
I'll take the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions on the minutes? Motion carries. And didn't we already take the, did we motion under J's piece for State Rep Kruger's lease?
No.
Okay. I need a motion to renew the lease agreement with State Representative Leanne Kruger for two years, for the years of 2023 and 2024.
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Need a motion to cancel the workshop meeting for the month of December.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to advertise the yearly list of committee meetings for the year 2023.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries. And we need a motion to appoint the following members to the Haley-Christine Jackson Butterfly Sanctuary Committee. The members are Sean McKenna, Frank Collins, Michelle Cusano, Charles Allen, Aldra Shields, Kevin Haney, and Karen Dauber. That is the motion. Who wants it?
I'll make that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions on that motion? Motion carries. And last, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays, and thank you all for your continued support. That goes to council, all the employees, and obviously, the residents.
Good.
Thank you. Ms. Swicki.
Yes, we do have some bills tonight to pay, so I will try to be brief. We have the budget, too, so we'll be a little lengthy. General fund for this month was $162,986.65. Sewer fund was $18,760.98. Trash fund was $3,190.19 for a total of $184,937.82. So, I'm going to make a motion so we can pass the bills.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? It carries.
Okay, this is the first ordinance for taxes. We're going to be doing tax ordinances and miscellaneous things regarding that. The first one is the ordinance for the borough setting the tax rate for calendar year 2023. The rate is, for general purposes, a sum of 3.5 mils on each dollar of assessed value, making the total 3.5. of assessed value, making the total three point five oh mils for residential property and all property in the borough. So I am making a motion that we pass this ordinance. John, do you have a number? You don't, if you don't have, you can, you'll get assigned it later.
Yeah, I got one here.
You can assign it after.
You can assign it later. I mean, that's fine. So I'm just making the motion so we can pass the tax for two thousand twenty-three.
Who would like to second?
I'll second.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed or any questions?
Okay, the next is the ordinance for sewer. Now, the sewer rate is based on zones. Zone one is basically this side of the avenue. Zone two is over by Our Lady of Charity. Zone three is basically a third precinct. Four is the people that go to the plant. And five is other areas where the hilltop condominiums are. So it's zone one is four hundred eighty-three dollars and forty cents. Zone two is four hundred eighty-three dollars and forty cents. Zone three is four hundred eighty-three dollars and forty cents. That's because most of these people are Delkor customers, so that's where, why the numbers are the same. Zone four is the plant, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the condominiums, zone five, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty cents. So the payment is due on or before May thirty-first. If it isn't, then there's a ten percent penalty in the ordinance. So I want to make a motion that we do pass the annual sewer rental charge for two thousand twenty-three.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed or any questions? Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is refuse collection for trash. The annual trash collection is three hundred and seventy-four dollars per dwelling in the borough for every resident who does have trash collection, collection. Now, it wouldn't apply to the condominiums because they have private trash hauling. So it's anybody who the borough trash trucks collect from. So I'm making a motion that we do pass the two thousand twenty-three trash is the refuse collection fee, which is three hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Who would like the second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed or any questions? Motion carries.
Okay, now, in conjunction with that, we do have a trash rebate which some residents are eligible for. I'm going to try to explain this. There is, if somebody, if a household is making less than thirty-five thousand dollars annually, there is a fifty percent rebate. And the, as I said, it was three hundred and seventy-four dollars. So half of that would be a rebate to you. But there is a form that the office will have. Usually it's, it's there by St. Patrick's Day and it has to be completed and filled out by June thirtieth. So you have like three months to fill it out. If your, if your income for your household is seventeen thousand five hundred or less, there's a hundred percent rebate. Maybe the rebate would be three hundred and seventy-four dollars. So we do encourage people, the secretaries will have them. You can collect them. And there is attachments. You have to attach your paid tax bill, your real estate tax bill, social security, and your other ten ninety-nine information so we can verify. Because we can't do it unless we can verify. So the motion is for the trash rebate for two thousand twenty-three. I'm going to make that motion.
Who would like to second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any questions or any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next, the next one is revolving payments that we have for the borough. We do make automatic payments when we have bills coming in. There are certain bills, like insurance bills, things of that nature, like the trash bill. Those are things that we're automatically authorizing. And so every month when the bill comes in, Deliva pays it so we don't get penalized with interest payments and things of that nature. So I'm making the motion so that we can pay, resolving the pay, paying certain bills upon receipt that are automatic. We always call them automatic payments. So I'm going to make that motion for that ordinance. It's actually a resolution, I'm sorry.
Who would like the second? All in favor? Any questions or any opposed? Motion carries.
No, the next, the next one is adopting borough salaries for two thousand twenty-three. And there's a list of the employees and what their salaries are for next year. So I'm making a motion by resolution, adopting the borough salaries by position as of January first of two thousand twenty-three. So that's the next motion.
Who would like to second? All in favor? Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Okay, the last one I have for this is every year, because we use WSFS Bank or whatever bank we would use, we have to authorize it by resolution. So this is the resolution authorizing WSFS Bank as our depository. And that's required by the Borough Code. So I'm making a motion so we can pass this by resolution tonight for next year.
Who would like to second?
Second.
All in favor? I am opposed. They require a roll call.
Oh, you are opposed? Sorry. Hold on a second, let me get my check sheet. This is on the WSF.
Wisfis. Mrs. Fuchs?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
No.
Mrs. Heller?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Mr. Gilbory is absent. Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Ms. Sewicki?
Yes.
Mr. Vasquez is absent. The yeses have it. Motion carries.
The only comment I would make is the bank we're using is the bank we've had since the borough was incorporated more than, what?
And I'm opposed because I have major problems with their business ethics across all their divisions.
Okay. What else wanted to say?
And it's major, major.
Okay, I understand that. And I don't have anything else right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? John, is this in our bank, is it Brinmore Trust?
They were bought by Wisfis.
They were bought by WSFS. Every year we have to, Harrisburg wants us to submit this. They know when they audit us who.
Right, I realize, yes, we must have a depository bank. I was on the impression it was Brinmore Trust and okay.
Yeah, it was until this year.
Yeah, they were purchased by Wisfis like two years ago.
The new name took over. It's the same personnel, but it's, I don't know.
Well, the same personnel on site, but they're owned by Wisfis now.
That's correct.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you. I have a couple of motions for tonight. My first one is I'd like to make a motion to advertise the new towing ordinance.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed or questions? You are opposed? We have a roll call. That's two in one night. Busy man, aren't you? Mrs. Fuchs?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mrs. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Pappas?
No.
Ms. Sewicki?
Yes.
Mr. Vasquez is absent. Yeses have it.
Yeses have it.
Motion carries.
And my second motion, I'd like to appoint Maria Rose Walker to the ordinance committee.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Carries. Welcome aboard. Thank you. I thought she was here, I guess not.
I don't see her here tonight.
She was here last week.
Yeah. Ordinance committee news. The ordinance committee did not meet in November and we will not meet in December. And I mentioned it the last meeting, but I'll mention it again. I'm looking for a few good residents to join the ordinance committee. If interested, please call the Borough Office and leave your information with the, one of the girls working in the office. Or John, sorry, John. This Saturday was our electronics recycling event. We, yes, we had it in the Port Huron ring. I would like to thank Charles Allen, Lynn McMonaco, Sherry, and B and L for working with me in the Port Huron ring. We had actually a good amount of people that dropped off electronics, so that was some, glad we had it.
That's good.
Our next red and electronic event will be on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Now, I'd like to talk about yesterday. We had a lot of things going on here yesterday. We had our senior luncheon. We had our annual tree lighting. And we had our gingerbread and cookie decorating event. We were happy to see so many residents in attendance. The seniors have told many of us that they felt that this year was the best luncheon yet. And Johnis?
I agree. I agree. It was very good.
I think part of it was because we had a lot of door prizes, we had a lot of great decorations, the food was good. It was just, I really want to commend the rec board for, and Tom, for their hard work. It was a big deal to pull that off. We were here starting at ten o'clock yesterday. We didn't get home until eight o'clock last night. So it was just, just, it was all for the residents, young, old, everybody in between.
How'd the tree go?
There was a little difficulty, technical difficulty, but it has been addressed.
It's been fixed, yeah.
It has been fixed.
It's been fixed, yes.
Did you post that on Facebook?
I didn't post it at all. I just responded in your defense.
I would like to thank Janice and Mike Arvey because they made a bunch of candy bags yet again for one of our events, so I want to thank them. I want to thank the fire department and for Santa Claus. And I want to end my report by saying that these events would not be possible or successful if not for the volunteers that we are so fortunate to have. So thank you, everyone. And lastly, I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you to Mrs. Heller and Mr. Dykes and everyone else involved for all the events throughout the year. Incredible and it's a heck of a lot of time that you folks put in. That's for sure. Mrs. Heller, whose birthday is tomorrow. Happy birthday. She gets me as a present. Sorry. Can't return mine either.
Okay, so we have a parade committee wrap-up meeting scheduled for Wednesday. This Wednesday, the seventh, at seven-thirty. So anyone that's interested in coming up, please do. We're just talking about the parade and what we, lessons learned and what we can do better for next year. The Haley-Christine Jackson Butterfly Sanctuary, there is a meeting this Sunday, December the eleventh, at eleven o'clock in this room. So anybody that wants to join, please do so. I do have one of Mr. Gilbory's update for the Civic Plus. So for the Civic Plus update, which is ours, mass notification system that we're working on, our next meeting obviously will be scheduled once Mr. Gilbory is feeling better. We will not be launching in early December, as mentioned in the November meeting. We still are developing the standard operating procedures, templates, and a communication plan, as well as executing a more reasonable launch date and how we're going to get that out there. So stay tuned. It's probably going to be more towards the beginning of the new year for us to launch our mass notification system.
Launching it without the proper preparedness could be a disaster, especially with the way the toll is used. Fully understood, it's just a few weeks delay.
Basketball's opening day is this Saturday, twelve-ten, at nine o'clock in the gym. So anybody who wants to come out and please support our kids, please do so. I also have a few thank yous as well. I do want to thank the entire rec board, especially Tom, for an amazing year of a lot of hard work, especially yesterday. Yesterday, I think, was more of a challenge. But I also want to thank not only the rec board, but I also want to make sure that Harry gets notified, recognition as well because Harry does a lot of, a lot of work setting up, breaking down. Yesterday, there was a little bit of a camera malfunction. He was only gone for two hours, but within those two hours, I must have called him twelve times. So I thank you, Harry, for always being here and keeping the events.
And a real hero in the back there, yeah.
I also want to thank the Sun Valley High School Honor Society, as well as Northly's Middle School Honor Society. They came out, the students came out yesterday to help and assist with all of our events yesterday. So we really couldn't have pulled it off as much if we didn't have their assistance as well. With the upcoming holiday season, just a few reminders that obviously we want to make sure that everyone remains safe and that they remain well during the entire holiday season. So here's my little tips for December. Make sure you're securing all of your doors, cars, and houses. Don't leave anything unattended or in plain view of your vehicle, even if your door is locked. Anyone carrying a purse, don't hang on the back of the chairs when you're out and about. Don't walk alone, especially at night or early in the morning. Have a buddy system. Make sure you're aware of your surroundings. I don't like to say the four-letter word, snow. But with the weather changing, please be careful while traveling and walking. We also don't want anyone slipping and falling or having any type of accidents. Slow down, take your time. Check in on a neighbor or a friend who may not be able to get out and about. Please slow down on all the roadways because if you do speed, our police will get you. With that, everyone have a happy holiday.
Mrs. Heller, Mr. Pappas, sir.
Very simple. I attended a workplace.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I do have two motions. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
George was all revved up.
I know, I'm so sorry. Okay, so I do have two motions for tonight, really big ones. So the first one is for a motion for the Civil Service Commission to provide council with the eligibility list for the sergeant's position.
Who wants to second?
I'll take the second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Questions on the motion? Motion carries.
Once that certified eligibility list is forwarded to council, council will then be eligible to make promotions from that list if it sees fit, beginning January of two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Jay. So the next motion I have is a motion to have civil service begin testing for a full-time, for a full-time police officer.
I'll take the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Carries.
And again, that testing would now be in compliance with the new civil service rules and regs that have expanded the eligibility list exponentially based on this evening's vote.
Thank you for that, Jay.
I'm done now.
Mr. Pappas, for real.
I attended a workplace safety meeting on the thirtieth of November. We had three employees injured last month. Two of them just required simple first aid and the third one needed stitches and they were from the public works. Police department didn't have any injuries, the fire department didn't have any injuries, no borough vehicles were damaged or no vehicle accidents were reported. And lastly, the fire department reported training on their new truck to increase their performance and safety on the use of it. Not good, that's the end of it.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Mr. Vasquez is absent. Mr. Gilbory is absent. Inspector's reports.
There's two motions.
There's two motions.
Where, what are you talking about?
Under Mr. Vasquez.
Oh, well, thanks for the reminder. Oh, got it, I need a motion to approve the storing of road salt at the borough garage for the, for Chester Township.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Need a motion to approve the storing of road salt at the garage for Parkside Borough.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both motions carry, as y'all know, there's townships, the borough and Chester Township does not have space to store salt, so they piggyback off of us every year, so nothing new. Mr. Leslie, sir.
Okay, uh, Parker Way over there is moving along pretty good, stopped there a couple times a week, uh, forty-eleven H one out of the van, so this is coming up on, uh, almost, uh, final inspections over there, one-twenty-one East Perk, where everybody see the storage facilities out of the ground moving along. Uh, holidays are coming here, uh, let's not get complacent. Uh, Councilman Sherry, I was just talking about that, so remember, uh, don't go over your receptacle, extension cord, and whatnot, so pay attention. And, uh, please don't drink and drive, buckle up.
That's right.
Stay alive, that's it, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy birthday, Mr. Leslie.
Yes.
When is your actual birthday?
It was yesterday.
Oh, it was yesterday, forgot to text you, sorry.
It was Sunday.
Four sixty-four, you knew the math.
Fifty-seven? Oh, fifty, uh, eight. You don't have many good.
Wrong age is out there, no.
You don't have many, uh, you don't have many good summers left. Mr., Mr. Polo, sir.
Only a number, Mr. Polo, sir. Only a number.
Let's go to the much more youthful, Chris Polo.
Not much. Uh, the number, I can say most of my time dealing with, uh, permits, permit being built in electrical, eight base cities in Fleming. Um, with that said, I sent out sixteen lines letters, uh, I didn't keep track, but I met with several residents after residents go over issues, several came here, uh, standing with contractors on some business. Uh, with that said, ended up with three or four permits I filed and twenty-nine others issued. And that's all, I wrote the contract, so just happy holidays.
Thank you, sir, happy holidays. That was the second public discussion session, if you'd like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Good evening, Tom Dykes.
Good evening.
Just gonna put you on the agenda for.
Three oh five West Perk, I've been saying that for two years.
I know.
Yes.
I know.
Yesterday was a tiring, exhausting, but fun day. Um, we had around two hundred seniors, although some of them are now objecting to be calling seniors, so I'm not sure what to call them. Um, you know, some of the younger ones.
Mature people.
Mature, wise.
Yeah, but then we miss the people that are fifty and above, because they're part of AARP now too, so technically they're seniors, so.
I have a week left. Yeah, settle down.
I'm still one of the older. On council stuff, anyway, um, so we had a fun day with that, it was really good, um, we got lots of compliments, we really did.
You deserved one.
And, um, I want to thank everybody for helping out and doing that. Uh, the tree lighting last night, other than disappointment with the tree, which got fixed, uh, did a round back, looks much, much better tonight than it did last night. It was amazing, when the kids were lighting, getting, coming in to fill in, we get ready to go outside, the, the gym was probably three-quarters full, you know, about that? And we went outside, the kids did an amazing job, uh, teachers did great with them, so thanks to Pandoco for that. When we walked back inside, I escorted Santa back into the building, thank you, chief, for bringing Santa to us, we love that. I went to drop off my coat, I come back to tell people what to do, and it was standing room only in the gym. So, Harry, I hope you weren't watching, because we definitely were over fire limit yesterday. But it didn't last long, the kids got their refreshments and had lots of fun. We had all the, all the exits were open, chief, you were there, all the exits.
It's already in the public record, Tom, you can't.
Um, but we had a great time. Uh, Sun Valley was amazing, um, they sent us ten, or twenty students throughout the day from the Honor Society, uh, we could not have done it without them. I mean, we, we would have been crazy pulling our hair out by that point, but it was amazing what they did. Uh, we got donations from different, different businesses in town to help do things and everything else, and once again, thank you to the borough for sponsoring such a function that affects every age group in this town, I think they're great. So that's where we are, we're taking about a month vacation from, from, uh, rec board, right now, a little bit of vacation.
Tiny bit.
Tiny.
You don't meet in December, right?
No.
We don't, not meet in December, so.
We have some planning to do.
We have planning to do.
We have planning to do.
So our next event is for our fifty-five plus, uh, it's the, an artsful, uh, artsful aging.
Artful aging, yeah.
And it's a decoration for Valentine's Day, and it's fifty-five above, it's on January twenty-second for, at one o'clock, so if you'd like to kind, sign up for that, everybody do, that'd be great, love to have that. We brought the age down a little bit, because we had some people that were asking if we could include them into the art program, so it was really good. So it was really good, we're looking forward to doing a lot more this coming year, expanding on programs, if you have an idea, please let us know. If you would like to help out any way, shape, or form, you know, just for one event or for all the events, let us know, we will take any and everyone's help for doing all of that. And I think that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Tom, for all you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
Thank you for everything, Tom.
Yep.
Sir, anyone else that would like to speak for public discussion? Second public discussion session is closed. Counsel, anything else?
I just want to wish everybody a very happy season of, whether it's Christmas, Hanukkah, or whatever you say, everybody have a very merry time, I have, for everybody.
And stay healthy.
Yep.
Stay healthy, amen.
Ditto, inspectors, anyone else, chiefs? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, happy holidays and Merry Christmas, everyone.